Like to welcome everybody to our council meeting tonight. I'll ask the Honorable Mayor Bobby Herndon to lead us in our prayer. And right from the prayer, we'll go right into the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this time, this opportunity to come out and discuss the business of this great city of Northport, Alabama. Just give these councilors a wisdom and guidance to lead our city in the direction you'd have us to go. Be always with our military, our police, our fire, first responders everywhere. Letting us live in a nation where we can come and sit down together, discuss business without fear of interdiction by anyone. Lord, just thank you for blessing us this way. Thank you for loving us. These things we ask. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is founded on a nation under God, indivisible, and infinite.
Mr. Collins, call roll, please.
Councilwoman Hayes. Councilman Sims.
Here.
Councilman Harper.
Here.
President Logan.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mr. President.
Item five is approval of the agenda, ladies and gentlemen. In our pre-meeting, Ms. Flora Gay gave us another addition to our agenda, uh, which will be called item eight A two. It is a first reading of an ordinance renaming Fifteenth Street Court to Dr. E.J. James Street. Of course, this is the first reading only to be added to the agenda. I'll make that motion to approve the agenda with the addition of item eight A two. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Collins.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item six is visitors to address the council. I know, ladies and gentlemen, I don't have it on the agenda, but I'll go off track just a little bit. I wanted to introduce some special guests. These young ladies are part of the Wildcat Youth Cheer, right here in the great city of Northport. And they participated in the West Alabama Youth Cheer Competition over the weekend, did very well. They represented the city of Northport well, their friends and family well as also too, and I think they had a great time doing it. Uh, the, the parents and the cheer sponsors also have done an excellent job throughout the year, teaching these girls the, the sport of cheer. But I know a lot of the girls didn't want to take a picture with me, they wanted to take a picture with Mayor Herndon. So, we know who, who is the big dog here. So, uh, if I can get all the young ladies to stand up. And, and girls, if, if you'll make your way in front of the podium, just make your way around. We're gonna take us a great picture. Take you a great picture. Take you a great picture. Keep on going around. Keep on going around. Keep going around. Okay.
Why don't you circle them? If you circle them, you probably get them on, um, you know, semi circle.
Have a, yeah. Now, Mayor, you, you promised them a cheer, so I think you may want to just get in there and get a cheer with them. Wait a minute, wait a minute, you gotta let them teach you one. Girl, I, I don't know if it's a cheer that y'all do, I mean, I don't know. Okay. Thank you, girls. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming up. I know y'all are very busy. Yeah, you, you're released to go home. Thank you, girl. Thank you. You don't want to see, you don't want to see politics. You just keep cheering. That was off agenda, ladies and gentlemen. Thank y'all for letting me do that. Item seven A one, under unfinished business, is a second reading of a permanent resolution accepting maintenance for municipal improvements in Rosewood subdivision. And Mr. Swan gave us a brief synopsis in our pre-meeting. These are, these are basically improvements with the exception of sidewalks such as streets, curb and gutter, sanitary sewer and water lines that have been approved by our city staff and inspection staff, and we are ready to sign off. And it's close to the one-year anniversary of those, and those have passed all inspections. And these is just a permanent resolution accepting these for maintenance and improvements in Rosewood subdivision. Do I have a, have a motion to accept?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
That's a motion by Councilman Harper. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Sims. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Collins.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item eight A one is a first reading of an ordinance authorizing a conditional use approval to allow filling in the floodway fringe at six hundred sixty-fourth Avenue. Ms. Gay.
Yes, Flora Gay, Planning Department. We do have a-
Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Our first reading on authorizing a conditional use to approve to allow filling in the floodway fringe at six hundred sixty-fourth Avenue. And this has gone to our planning commission and is coming before the city council tonight with a favorable recommendation. Uh, this is for Core Industry, and they are here. And also, their engineer and our city engineer department met and worked out the issues that we had. So, it is ready for approval for a first reading tonight. And also, they are requesting that the council, uh, suspend the rule and to suspend the rules and approve it tonight.
Thank you. I think in pre-meeting, we had no issue about suspending the rules. So, uh, Mr. Davis, with that being said, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Sims. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Collins.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes. Mr. President, the rules are suspended in order to consider item eight A one.
Thank you. In, in suspension of rules, consideration of item eight A one, do I have a make a mo- I'll make a motion to approve that ordinance authorizing a conditional use approval to allow filling in the floodway fringe at six hundred sixty-fourth Avenue. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Sims. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Collins.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims. Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item eight A two, the item that was recently added is a first reading, of course, for renaming the existing Fifteenth Street Court to Dr. E.J. James Junior Street. Again, Ms. Flora Gay gave us a synopsis. We have been working with the church member body, uh, the business body of the church for over a year and a half. They've gone through the proper processes and procedures. Uh, Ms. Gay has also sent proper lettering or letters to the property owners as such. So, with that being said, I'll make a motion for that first reading, so no other action is taken. So, this is a first reading for renaming Fifteenth Street Court to Dr. E.J. James Junior Street. Item A B one is a resolution declaring items as surplus and authorizing a proper disposal. Uh, Ms. Starnes.
Brooke Starnes, Public Works. I got two A.C. units from Shirley House. One's a window unit and one was sitting outside. And those are gonna be, we're gonna take those to the scrapyard and that'll be deposited back into the Shirley Place account. We also got a backhoe for, from Utilities Department and a pressure washer that'll go to the auction.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve that resolution declaring these items as surplus and authorizing a proper disposal.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Harper. President Logan will make the second. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Collins.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item A B two is a resolution awarding bid file one five dash zero nine for concrete. Ms. Starnes, this is out of Public Works. Again, this is basically the yearly annual bid for concrete services for the city of Northport. The lowest responsible bidder for the bid file was Bama Concrete. Uh, with that being said, I'll make a motion to approve and award the bid for concrete file one five dash zero nine to Bama Concrete, being the lowest bidder, meeting the specifications and having the lowest unit prices specified and giving the city administrator's office the approval for all purchase requisitions and concrete using the unit prices from the said bid file attached. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Collins.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, item A B three is a resolution awarding bid file one five dash one zero for drainage pipe. This is out of Public Works, Ms. Starnes' department. Again, this is the lowest responsible bidder for drainage pipe, one five dash one zero. Again, I'd like to make a motion to approve that bidder, meeting the specifications and having the lowest unit prices specified and authorizing the city administrator's office to authorize any purchase requisitions for the said bid file item. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Collins.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item four is a resolution awarding bid file one five dash one one for stone and riprap. Again, this is out of our Public Works. This is an annual bid item. Again, Pierce Trucking was the lowest responsible bidder for stone and riprap, riprap services. I'll make a motion to approve that lowest responsible bidder and authorizing the city administrator's office to approve all purchase requisitions for the said bid file and item. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Collins.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item five is a res- resolution awarding bid for emergency repairs to our lift station number one. Uh, Mr. Ingram.
Larry Ingram, Utilities. Uh, yes, sir, Mr. President, Mayor, members of council. As you'll recall, earlier this year, Station One, which is located at Fifth and Laurel Lane at the, uh, off-ramp, suffered some damage during some maintenance operations. Um, we moved forward with design on that repair. Uh, design was complete. The project was bid. Uh, we bid the project last week, and GFC Construction was the low bid on that project at one eighty-one, six seventy-five. And we're requesting approval of that bid to move forward with this repair.
Thank you. And this is the lift station that handles east of Bridge Avenue, of course, all of downtown too. Is that right?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve that resolution awarding the bid file for lift station number one to GFC Construction in the amount of one eighty-one, six seven, five point zero zero and authorize the city administrator to execute the necessary documents and P.O. requisitions to proceed with the emergency project. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Collins.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item six is a resolution awarding bid file one five dash one two, furnishing of fuel. Again, this is out of Ms. Starnes of Public Works. Moore Petroleum Company, of course, is the lowest bidder, meeting the specifications and having the lowest unit prices specified in the attached, uh, bid tabs and, and actually, this is a three-year deal. Is that right, Ms. Starnes? And this is fuel for unleaded diesel and off-road and on-road vehicles, right? Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve that resolution awarding the bid file to Moore Petroleum, being the lowest bidder and authorizing the city administrator to approve all needed P.O. requisitions for the unit prices of the said bid file. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Collins.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item seven is a resolution authorizing engineer consulting services. Mr. Collins.
Yes, Mr. President, members of council, Mayor Herndon, as you're aware, last year, uh, the city of Northport contracted with Walker Associates Engineering for some consulting work, um, to be done, to be done on behalf of the city. Um, most of that work has been complete. One of those items that have, that has been completed is the engineering work on Phase Seven from Forest Glen subdivision. What we have before you tonight is nothing more than the authorization for, authorization for Walker Associates to sign those documents so that the, uh, property owner developer will be able to move forward with the, um, development and completion of, of Phase Seven of that subdivision.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve that resolution authorizing Walker Associates to execute the engineering documents as needed or signature approval as needed on behalf of the city of Northport for Forest Glen Phase Seven as part of the general engineering consulting services provided by Walker Associates on behalf of the city. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Collins.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Sims. Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item C is our consent agenda. They range from minutes of the previous meeting, bill listings and one travel and training for one employee for H.V.A.C. training, of course, fifty dollars for, uh, November the fifth. I'll make that motion to approve the consent agenda as printed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Collins.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item nine is reports of special committees to council. We have none to report. Item ten is public hearings. We have none on the agenda. Item eleven, city administrator's business. Mr. Collins.
Uh, Mr. President, unfortunately not.
Item twelve is departmental business. We have none to report. Item thirteen is public comment. I think we have three citizens to speak on the agenda. I will start with the always dapper, Mr. Steven Schwab.
At a recent city council meeting, in which, um, Mr. Scott Collins interviewed the four candidates to fill Councilman Ackers' seat, Mr. Collins asked each one of them, what is your vision for the city of Northport? Now, I think this is a very important question, which I think from time to time, each member of the city council, the mayor, and yes, the city administrator, Scott Collins, should address publicly. What is your vision for the city of Northport? The answer to a follow-up question, I think, is also important. What is your plan for achieving your vision? I think these questions and your responses should be at the forefront of every voter's mind when they go to the polls in next year's election. I'd like to briefly mention my own vision. Uh, when I think of the possibilities for downtown Northport, which is where I live, I think of Franklin, Tennessee, which is just down the road, about a three-mile, uh, three-hour drive, not a three-mile drive. Franklin is like Northport. It's a charming city. And it has festivals year-round. It has, I think it's the first week in November, it has a wine tasting festival called Wine Down Main Street. It has its own Dickens Festival. I think we borrowed some of the ideas for our Dickens Festival from Franklin. When I think about what we could do here in Northport, uh, it occurs to me that every spring, we could have a pie baking and test, and tasting contest. Uh, these are very popular in the Midwest and in New England. And I was watching a program recently on PBS Television where a pie was raffled off, the winning pie, in one of these festivals for one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. I was amazed. I think in the late fall, after Kentuck, uh, we could have a chili cook-off. These, this is as far as my current thinking goes. But I have no doubt that if we were to have these festivals in addition to Dickens, and it would, um, bring in more people, more revenue, both for the merchants and for the city of Northport. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Diana, I think you are up next. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Diana Schwab, and I live at twenty-five Twenty-Fifth Street in downtown Northport. About a month ago, Elizabeth Standard spoke to you announcing the Northport Community Potluck. This is sort of a, a community response to what is our vision of Northport. It's to actually create community, to celebrate Northport as a venue for arts, crafts, antiques, festivals, folk life, music, food and friendship. And, uh, we have gotten considerable response. Uh, there will be, uh, good food and, um, light beverage and a lot of, uh, fun and friendship. And you're all invited. Everyone here is invited. And I have some flyers that announce it. It will be at the community center this coming Sunday, October twenty-fifth, from two-thirty to five-thirty. If you plan to come, bring something to share that you like. So, come and enjoy.
Thank you. Mr. Walters.
Kenneth Walters, I live at, uh, forty-eight thirteen Stewart Park, right on top of the hill here in Northport, Alabama. Uh, several weeks ago, I brought up something here, and we didn't get much discussion off the floor. Of course, we have a lot of discussion on Facebook. It seems like a lot of these people don't ever come to a meeting, but they do a lot of meeting on Facebook. And of course, you know, I brought it up about, uh, the wages and stuff and what the mayor makes and other people. I can tell you right now, of course, in a Monday, uh, Monday or last Monday's paper, there was something in there. And, uh, I hope y'all do put together a task force to adjust the wages of these fine people that's on this thing right here. Because, see, I don't want people to work for me for nothing. We've got one of those work for me, nothing credit unions right out there on top of that hill, and we ain't never paid them nothing. And you're gonna get what you pay for. We need to start paying these council people. You know, it's just like right now, y'all come to this meeting, you come to that meeting, you come to these workday shops, you go places like that. I want you to charge me. I don't want you to work free. Because if you work free, you're gonna start stealing, or you're gonna start doing things that's unethical. So, y'all need to get together, and it don't matter how many cookie festivals you have over here. This group in this District One down here, if y'all went down there today and staked it off today to build a hotel, you'd have all things break out over here. The people of Northport, Alabama, don't want no change over here. And y'all have tried to get a school system, you've tried to do other things, and every time y'all come up with something, they flare up on Facebook, or two or three of them come out here, and I guess y'all get scared. I don't want scared people to lead this council. And if you don't want to lead, don't run next time. I'm just telling you, like, is we need some leaders over here, and for Northport to grow, we just can't sit up here and take a, a, a wind monitor. Every time District One down there wants something. And as far as this Fifth Avenue, my good friend, Mr. Schwab, will go over to Tuscaloosa, he gets some real good ideas over there. It's actually on Fifth Street too, where they built all the new hotels. When you're driving over there, you think you're driving on Tulane Road. Friday evening, there was a car hit one of those new little islands out there, and it knocked that tire slap off. And, uh, we just need to, uh, get to the business, and we need to, and run this place like a business. And we need to have people to think like business folks. And we've got some good people over here. But we let a handful of people in Northport, and it just didn't start yesterday. It's been back when I used to live in Tuscaloosa, and I'd actually come across this bridge just to come over here and listen to this mess. And it's still going on. And I hope ever who gets elected to this council, if you ain't ready to lead, follow or get out of the way, don't run. That's all I got to say. And, you know, I hope y'all will go ahead and put your task force together, anything like that. Anything I can do, I will support you, I can tell you right now. Because the only way we can carry this place forward is have strong people. You can't have people working for you for nothing. You know, somebody wants to come cut my yard at my, up on Stewart Park, y'all come on up there and work. I'll work y'all all day and everything. People don't need to work for nothing. And that's what's wrong with this country. I appreciate y'all's, a good job y'all doing. And don't run unless, unless you ain't ready to lead. Don't let two or three people jump up and say something, stop the whole show. If you did, we, we wouldn't never get nothing done. It's a miracle we get something done over here as it is.
Thank you. You're in a good mood today, I can tell you.
Well, I am in good mood, but you know, people come up here and just talk. And Lord, who knows this guy named Bach, John Bach? He, he is quoting me in that thing right there. This guy right here, I don't know, we need to find out, his guy has got to be the biggest idiot in Northport, Alabama. If he knows as smart as he is, I wanted to find out, one, who did the two hundred and fifty thousand belong to at the credit union out there?
You, you just exhausted all your time.
And why John, and, and why we can't get Don Siegel out of jail?
You just exhausted your time for next council meeting. So, I just, you just exhausted your time for next council meeting.
Well, when you talk about John Bach, we got a lot of, yeah, yeah. It's crazy. This guy's a nut.
Item fourteen is mayor and council members' business. I'll start with District One, the Honorable Councilwoman Judy Hayes.
I have no comment tonight.
Thank you. I, uh, District Two, under my business, I know in the pre-meeting, I gave everybody a brief, uh, progress report on downtown. I know T News and everybody else, maybe Gazette as well, I don't know if you guys were in the pre-meeting. But, uh, a couple months ago, we had a couple downtown business owners who were very concerned about the conditions of downtown. So, we actually took that very seriously. And, uh, Public Works, to their credit, leadership of Brooke Starnes and her staff, uh, for the last thirty to sixty days, we have a entire punch list done. So, uh, if you'd like to get a copy of that, I do have a copy of my punch list. But just for the record, I know everybody was, uh, really concerned about the street pole lighting. But I, I'll say this, and I've actually spoke to every single downtown business owner last Friday about thirty, uh, and gave them a brief update, and they were very pleased at the progress that the city has done. The reason the street pole lights have not been painted is, is simply as such. We put those in the twenty-sixteen budget for next year because it is a larger budgetary expense. It's gonna require some logistical communication and coordination between the city and our proposed contractor. That's gonna need to be bitted out. Uh, and then I think somebody maybe quoted something about banners not looking up to par. Well, it doesn't make sense to put banners up when your street poles need to be painted. So, let's do one, and then the other, then the other. And then the tree trimming, that's probably gonna need to be done. So, that's a process that if people will give a little time and give a little consideration, that will be done. But, for example, we pressure washed every brick paver down in downtown Northport. I don't know if people who were complaining didn't see that, but every day, every Monday, our city staff are down at six o'clock in the morning, now seven with the time changing, that they're cleaning out storm gutters, and they've been doing that anyway. Uh, we have some irrigation problems, got that done, got the lighting done in some of the beds. Electrical work on the light poles still need to get done, but those will be, they'll, those will get done soon. Uh, the clock was another issue. To access the clock, you must go through Kentuck Museum. Well, Kentuck Museum is under construction right now. Uh, and that will actually, we're waiting on the cost for the labor and the parts for installing the wiring for the clock from Ellis Architects. So, all these things, actually, if they hadn't been done in the next forty days, I expect them to at least be on track to get done by, let's say, next spring. Because you still have to work with your business owners to, uh, open and close the street, make sure you're not hindering their business. So, with that being said, that, that's my two cents for the update on downtown. So, uh, out. All right, Mr. Schwab, thank you so much. Uh, thank you to Brooke, and, and thanks for everybody who brought this list to us. So, just to let everybody know, it's, it's actually done. So, thanks to staff.
Thanks, Brooke.
Thanks, Brooke. Uh, District Three, Councilman Sullivan, of course, is not here tonight. Uh, Councilmember Sims. Councilman Harper. The Honorable Mayor Bobby Herndon.
Yes, a couple things, Mr. President. Uh, we're talking about downtown. Well, this year, at, at our Dickens Festival, we're going to have a Northport Christmas Parade to open up the Dickens Festival. Um, of course, not to take away from Tuscaloosa's Christmas Parade, it's, uh, it's got to where it's sometimes three and four hours long. And some of the people, um, in the Northport area would say if we could, if we could have something. I've talked to the downtown merchants, and they're all in favor of maybe thirty minutes before we kick off Dickens, just have a parade. Uh, so if you know of anybody that would like to be in the parade, any civic groups, any churches, anything like that, um, they're more than welcome. Uh, but there'll be a, I think it's December the first, which will be the first Tuesday in December to kick off Dickens, and we'll have a, a Northport Christmas Parade. Also, uh, it's been brought up since the last council meeting and in the paper and some letters to the editors about, um, the mayor asking for a, a big raise and, uh, council people and things like that. Let me make it clear. All I said was, I want to appoint a task force to evaluate the ten cities above us, the ten cities below us in population, to report back to what they make. The, I know the councilmen, some of them getting blasted in the paper and stuff. The council hasn't had anything to do with this, is all Bobby Herndon, just to see what other folks- just to see what other folks make. Haven't asked for a raise, all we're doing is just what any other city would do, is just compare apples to apples. Um, at that time, uh, I'm gonna give them till, uh, the last of November to come back with their report, and if the council wants to do anything, they'll do something before February. If not, won't be anything. I just want our citizens to know where our elected officials stand in relation with the other cities our size. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Item fifteen, we had an executive session request. Mr. Collins?
Yes, Mr. President, members of council, Mayor Herndon, Mr. Davis, um, as you are aware, we have requested an executive session. We expect this session to last approximately twenty minutes. According to the Alabama Code, we need to notify you of that expectation of time so we can return to the regular meeting. Again, we expect it to take twenty minutes. There are two items to be discussed. First is the, uh, proposal of sale of the city property. The second is a potential litigation matter. Um, those are the two things we have before you. Again, we expect, um, to be twenty minutes. If we adjourn this meeting at roughly six-thirty-five, we will be back at no later than six-fifty-five. I do not expect any action by the city council tonight as a result of the executive session, other than to return to the open, to the regular meeting and adjourn the regular meeting.
Thank you. Uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn into executive session to last no more than twenty minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper? Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Collins.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Sims? Motion carries. We will be in executive session for approximately twenty minutes, thank you.
A motion to adjourn, do I have a second? I'll make a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. All in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.